Tonight, we're going to have three different presenters. And they're going to be Inland Valley Humane Society, Pasadena Humane Society, and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. You might be wondering why we have Inland Valley and Pasadena. Well, they both have their ways of dealing with the animals. And Pasadena has some great ideas. And we wanted to make sure we share as much information as we can. And it's not problematic at all. It's just a matter of getting information out to the public so they know what they can do and what they should do to discourage coyotes in this community. As far as tracking wildlife, Glendora Animal Control started here in 1982. And we had that service up until 2013. And during that time, all the wildlife was tracked and monitored. So that dealt with bears, deer, mountain lions, bobcats, coyotes, and any other skunks and possum. And the reason for that is we need to know what's going on since we're in the urban area abutting the foothills. And because of that, we're going to deal with wildlife all the time. The animals that we come in contact with greatly are anything from bears, mountain lions, and coyotes. Deer, everybody likes. They have no problem with deer. The problem with deers, though, is if you have deer on your property, you're going to have mountain lions. Because that's what mountain lions eat. They feast on deer. So during that time, we monitored it all. After we went to Inland Valley Humane Society in 2013, even though they took over our animal services, we kept track of all the different interactions, human interactions with animals, just so we know what to do and how to respond. Any case that comes up, say, for example, where there's been an attack. There was one last January where a dog on leash was attacked by some coyotes. Once that happened, we intervened. We got involved. And we do any number of things to take care of it. A lot of times, we'll either notify the public right away by circulating flyers. We'll go to that area where the attack happened, put out flyers, give information to everybody, let them know, be aware. You know, there's some high levels of animal activity here from wildlife, just to get them in tune to what's going on around their environment. We may also go out there and put mobile signs. We have these mobile signs that are electronic. We'll go up there and say mountain lion sightings or coyote activity. Whatever the case may be, we can put it up in an area and have an electronic device up there so people driving by can see what's happening. We can also use social media. In the advent of Twitter and Facebook or any other type of communication we can use as far as social media, we could also push info out that way. How can we educate ourselves? Well, there's a couple of things you can do. You can either go do your own research and find out what it's like dealing with wildlife, or you can go to our website. And we have a lot of information already there. If you go to our website, you'll see things like this where it shows "Living with Wildlife." Under this particular page, it's under the Police Department, "Living with Wildlife." You click on that, and it shows you different things that you can do as far as the wildlife. There's things with bears, coyotes, possums, deer. They're all listed there. What we'd like you to do, though, if you have any kind of incident with these animals, our preferred method of letting us know is to call the department. Call directly into the department. Our dispatch center has new software as of this last year. And we have the tracking capabilities for coyotes, bears, and anything else that are out there. We can do weekly reports and monthly reports that I monitor and pay attention to to see what's going on. If there's an incident where coyotes act like they're aggressive or a little bit more aggressive than normal, our patrol officers will actually respond and do what they have to do to get rid of the animal. We'll take the questions at the end. And the whole reason for that is we want our patrol officers to be aware and cognizant of what's happening in the area. Because then they have a clue of what kind of problems we're going to have with regard to wildlife. There are times when we have bears that a lot of times will come down during the summer and get in people's pools and start going through their trash cans. Once we know there's a problematic bear, we can contact California Department of Fish and Wildlife, get them involved if we need to. And if it's too aggressive, they may even tranquilize the bear and relocate it. Now, the question sometimes comes up about coyotes. Why don't you tranquilize them and relocate it? It's illegal. There is a law that says it's forbidden. If you capture or capture a coyote, you either release it right where you captured it or it gets terminated. And that's the way the law is written. We also have on our website an area that says Coyote Cacher. Coyote Cacher is a software program that was developed by the Cal State, I'm sorry, University of California system. And it's mainly for getting information and tracking the habitat of the coyotes. It's predominantly only data collection. So if you were to go in there and put your information on Coyote Cacher, that will help them on their study, but it's not going to help the police department as far as our response. Because we don't monitor that on a daily basis, minute by minute, to go out there and go after an aggressive coyote or some animal. But if you call the dispatch center, they will immediately call an officer to go out and respond. So the safest way to do it is always call the police department. Now, if there's a case of imminent attack or an animal's getting extremely aggressive, dial 911. Just dial 911, and we'll respond as quick as we can. Now, in a case like that, everything changes. You have a wild animal that's being aggressive towards people or kids or even other pets that are on leash, then that can be a definite problematic animal. The officers will show up. If it's something to deal with kids and safety, they will do what they need to do to get rid of the animal. A lot of times, it could be anything from pepper ball, which sends out pepper spray and gets them to go back into their environment. It could be rubber bullets, if we have to use that, or bean bags, all the way up to deadly force if necessary. At this point, I think the first person I'm going to have come up as a speaker is a representative from Inland Valley Humane Society. It's Officer Leon. And she'll come up and do hers.
My name is Officer Leon. I work with the Inland Valley Humane Society. I've been at the Humane Society for about 14 years. The last seven to eight years, I've done the whole wildlife program. So today, we're going to be talking about coyotes in the city of Glendora. You know, just a little bit of information in regards to the coyotes. Coyotes do appear and sometimes resemble a little bit the German Shepherd, a small German Shepherd. So a lot of times, people will confuse them as a German Shepherd. But when they get close, you know, obviously, it's not. It's a coyote. They are very slim. Sometimes even in the color, they do appear as a dog. But, you know, their size, their characteristics, you know, they do resemble a German Shepherd. Their behavior, a lot of times, people think, oh, my gosh, they're going to eat my dog. But for the most part, they're looking for rodents, squirrels, mice, gophers, fruits, veggies. Sometimes, if you have a koi pond, they'll go after that, too. I mean, you know. Unfortunately, sometimes, they do go after dogs. But for the most part, you know, they're trying to get, you know, other types of meals to feed themselves. Also, if you leave out dog food, cat food, they'll go for that, too. There are a couple of ways to deter them from the property. And they're really simple ways. Sometimes is, you know, putting the trash cans away, covering them. Sometimes it helps if you double-bag the trash. Sometimes, we also recommend people to pour, like, bleach. So like that, they don't smell the smell of the leftover food. You know, sometimes, people throw away chicken or pasta. And, I mean, if they're hungry, they smell that. They're going to go for it. So that could be a problem. So it's really easy, just, you know, keep track of that. Habitat. Coyotes, they do roam. Sometimes, you'll think, oh, my gosh, we have a lot of coyotes in the neighborhood. And it could just be the same one. Or it could be two, just roaming back and forth. You know, so they will travel a couple of miles. So sometimes, you might be seeing the same coyote going back and forth. And like I said, for food and hunting, I mean, they're going to go for what's easy for them to catch. And unfortunately, like I said, sometimes, they will go for somebody's pet. Now, with breeding, usually, January, February is the time that, you know, they're going to start breeding, mating, and all of that good stuff for coyotes. A lot of people don't like that because then they're like, oh, my gosh, we're going to have more coyotes, and it's going to be even a bigger problem. But at the same time, we have to think that coyotes actually do help our ecosystem. Because they do eat rats, mice that could, you know, end up hurting us if you have a garden or, you know, if you don't want rodents in a garage or something. Because then you have the coyotes going after that. So when they do mate, like I said, it's usually January to February. By April, they might have three to nine pups a year. You know, so you'll have all these litters. It takes about 63 to 65 days of gestation period. So once the pups are born, they will feed off of the mom for five to seven weeks, sometimes a little bit more. So then you'll start seeing the pups out more, playing, hunting, you know, just trying to move on and become, you know, self-sufficient. So if you start seeing coyote pups, it's going to be normal because it goes through a cycle. So again, a lot of times, people do not like coyotes. They want them gone. They just want us to trap them. Well, we don't trap them. And if something like that would happen, then it would really, you know, mess up the balance. Because if you start eradicating coyotes, then you're going to have an influx of rabbits, again, rats, mice, other critters that are also going to be a problem. And then you're going to say, well, now you guys need to get rid of these critters. Well, we had a coyote that was doing that job for us, you know. So this chart right here for the city of Glendora, 2017 and 2018, we actually had more bird calls than coyote calls. So in 2017, we had 14 coyote calls that were reported to the Humane Society. Now, people sometimes don't call us directly. They'll call the Police Department or they will call Fish and Wildlife. But off of the stuff that we have and all the calls that I went through for 2017, we only had 14 coyote calls. And as of last week, we had six coyote calls. So we had, like I said, a little bit more activity with the peacocks, hawks, owls, crows, more than coyotes. We didn't have that much deer or bobcat. Squirrels and rattlesnakes, they kind of went hand in hand. But the third one in line was possums, a lot of possums. So that's just to give you guys an idea of what we're, the calls that we are getting at the Humane Society. I know it's going to be kind of hard to see. But these are the locations. And some of them might be duplicates. But these are the locations that the calls that we received that the coyotes were sighted. So a lot of them, you know, they were, like, in the city. And a few were by the hillsides, up from Sierra Madre up to the foothills. So our coyotes are busy. So the main thing, even though a lot, a lot of people don't do this, you know, we always say, do not feed the coyotes. And sometimes, you might not think that you are feeding them. But if you leave, you know, dog food, cat food, even water, bird, even if you're feeding the birds, the seeds, it's a cycle. So when the seeds fall, you're going to have a squirrel come out. And then something else is going to try to get that squirrel. And then from there, boom, your coyote's there. So it's a cycle. So we also, you know, we have to, we have to keep in mind, if you're going to start feeding birds, you need to clean up after the seeds. If you have an outside cat, a lot of people have outside cats, or they think that cats cannot survive on their own. They're not self-sufficient. People start leaving out cat food. Well, once you start feeding strays, it's an open invitation for other critters, not only coyotes, but raccoons and possums. Because now you're providing a food source. If you have a large property, and some of these homes in Glendora, they're pretty big and, you know, beautiful homes. But they do have a lot of brush, a lot of greenery. We sometimes recommend, from the ground up, go about a foot. Because if it's all covered, they're going to den in there. So it's kind of, you're providing a home for them. So we always try to encourage people just, you know, clean up a little, trim the bushes, you know, do a little bit of landscaping around the property. Because if you don't, then you're actually letting them, you know, these critters come to your house, come to your yard, and make residents there. Okay, so that's, that's my biggest point. You know, if you have a lot of brush, clean it up. Don't leave dog food out. Don't leave water out, anything like that. And believe me, cats, they're self-sufficient. They will go after birds and provide their own food. You don't have to feed them. Even though a lot of people say, no, we have to feed them. But that just creates a problem. There's also deterrents that you could purchase. They have, like, the Critter Ritter, the Scarecrow, you know, the Dog and Cat Begone. A lot of times, people think that once you spray this, they're going to go away. Well, they're not. You have to be consistent with it. It's not a miracle powder that you just throw on your grass, and it's going to make them go away. It's not. So you also have to do your part. With the Scarecrow, the Scarecrow has a motion sensor. Anything it detects 20 to 30 feet in front of it, it's going to shoot water at it. So it's a great deterrent because, one, you're not hurting it. You're not hurting anything. You're just scaring it away with water. It only uses two to three cups of water every time it goes off. You can regulate it. You can make it go as wide as you want. And it runs on a 9-volt battery. And you just hook it up to a water hose. And you could find those at, I've seen them at Osh or online. If you are having problems with coyotes going onto the backyard, they also have the Coyote Roller. There's a company based out of the San Diego area. You could go on the coyoterocker.com webpage, and they will come out and install these rollers. I believe it's like $28 or $30 for every four feet. Or you could go to Home Depot and get the material and build it yourself, which would probably be a little bit cheaper. They do work. Because once the coyote grabs onto that roller, it will roll them back. Because even with people that have dogs that are always getting out of the yard, I always recommend use the Coyote Roller to keep your pet inside your property. So it works either way. So Title 14, harassment of animals. If we find out that there is a resident feeding, we try to educate first and let this person know this is why you do not want to feed. And if the problem continues, we either cite under Title 14, which is a misdemeanor, or we go with the Glendora Ordinance. So I know a lot of times, you know, you might think, well, I'm not feeding them. But again, if somebody's leaving out cat food, you're feeding them. So if you see a neighbor doing that, please let them know that they're doing more harm than good. And if they don't want to listen, give us a call, and we'll go talk to them. Okay, so the best thing to reach out is to educate. Educate the public. And educate and let them know how, you know, the importance of not feeding, not leaving out food. You know, and if you do come across a coyote, you know, I advise people to use an air horn or walk with a stick. You know, walk your dog on your standard six-foot leash, which is law anyways. I mean, that's what the law states, that it's a six-foot leash. I do not recommend those retractable leashes. Because if you panic, you're going to drop the leash. And if you start reeling it up, you could even hurt yourself because it's a wire. So keep your dog on a leash. And if you feel that there's a coyote in the area, please give us a call, and we'll go out there and patrol.
So my name's Elizabeth Richard Campo. I am the Senior Vice President at Pasadena Humane Society. I've been there about 13 and a half years now. It is wonderful to be invited here to talk about coyotes. Now we are in their breeding season. So I'm going to focus a little bit more on what you can do to feel safe around coyotes and what you can do to discourage them from wanting to be around people. One thing we often forget is we look at coyotes, and I'm glad we have the sample of a coyote to see an idea of the size we're dealing with. But when we see them in the wild, we sometimes exaggerate them in our brain as to how big they really are. The other thing that we forget because we tend to buy our food at the grocery store is that we're a predator and we're up higher on the chain than they are. And sometimes, they forget that a little bit, too. So what I'm going to be talking about is reminding them of where their place is in... Wrong way. Okay. This is who Pasadena Humane Society is. We are a private nonprofit that does animal control for 11 service areas. Similar to Inland Valley Humane Society, they are a private nonprofit who does animal control. For example of what our services are, picture of a coyote. So the urban coyote lives in family groups with one breeding pair. You don't, when you see a group of coyotes, that doesn't mean that they're all getting together, making pups. It means they have a controlled structure with a breeding pair that will be making the pups. The rest will be living and helping to raise the pups. And then some of the males will go off and find their own. Pup season is April through August. The yearling males will leave the pack in the summer and sometimes September. And that's sometimes when you see an elevation in a lone coyote just roaming around the streets. They're looking for their own area. And this is very important. Mating and litter size depends on the resources that are available to them. So if you make sure that there are not resources available to them, I mean, in nature, there are seasons where there's abundance and there are years when there's not abundance. When you're living in an urban area, there's almost always abundance. There's always trash to find. There's always animals that are eating the trash that are attracting coyotes. And we plant things, and people feed them. So that's something that needs to be, we need to be conscious of. We've created, basically, a grocery store for coyotes. Coyotes live in urban areas. That's it. They do. They're not transplants from somewhere else. They were probably generations living here. So that's a reality that we have to accept. They didn't move in from the mountains. They've come in years, you know, generations and generations ago. And because there's an abundance here, they're able to mate and make more coyotes. So why they like to live near us? Because there's food, water, shelter, and unattended pets. That's why. We're saying, hey, come on in. We've got all these things ready for you. So what you can do to help? You can remove bird feeders and bird baths. You can make sure your pet food is kept indoors. If you feed your pet outdoors or if you're feeding a community cat, only give a limited amount of time that that food is there. Make sure that you are attending that food and bring it in. This is also going to keep pests away, too. Securely contain. If you are composting, make sure you are not composting, accidentally putting meat products in that compost. And make sure that that compost pile or container is somewhat secure. Because that's going to attract rodents and coyotes and everything else that you don't want. You want that great soil for your garden. Secure your garbage and your gardens. I do not know of an animal that is not attracted to an avocado tree. So make sure that you pick your avocados and dispose of those properly. One thing I always recommend to people, and it's a kind of a great service. My local YMCA does a gleaning service that when the fruit trees are ripe, because you know if you have a fruit tree, they all come ripe at once. And then you end up with tons and tons of fruit, more than you can use. So some groups will get together. They'll come to your house. They'll pick all that fruit and then donate them to a food bank. So that's a way that, you know, you help them, help themselves. So you really are kind of serving yourself a little bit and passing on some of the riches that you have. So I think that's a really great opportunity. You need to keep your yard clear of overgrown branches, clear brush. A lot of these things are also things that you'll hear police officers talk to you about having to discourage less-than-honest people from being on your property. So they're very similar. So you don't want hiding places. So make sure, take a look at your property and see where could a coyote hide? Where could a person hide? Clear that out, make that visible. Close off your crawl spaces. I know, I'm sure Inland Valley Humane Society gets the same calls we get all the time. Is a possum got into my crawl space? A skunk, heaven forbid, got in under my house? How do I get them out? Make sure they're closed off is the best way is to discourage them. If they do get under your house, there are things you can do. Or under your deck, you can ammonia-soak some rags when they're not there and put that under that area. Nobody likes the smell of ammonia. Well, sometimes, yes. So that's something, something you can try. Something else we also advise? Spay and neuter your pets. We do that for selfish reasons because we want you to spay and neuter your pets. But we also say that because an in heat female dog can attract coyotes. And dogs that are intact, male dogs that are intact, can be attracted to coyotes. So we want to keep them separate. We do not want to make koi dogs. And we do not want to attract dogs into because the coyote doesn't smell that it's a chihuahua. It smells that it's an in heat dog. Pets and coyotes, you need to be responsible. You need to supervise your pets, especially smaller pets when outdoors. It's hard to tell in this picture, but this woman is, has created what is often called a catio. a catio, and it's a secure area outside for her cats to play, and her small dogs to play. Something like this is very effective in discouraging other wildlife from coming in and playing with the animals. Avoiding walking your dog at dusk and dawn, that's when you're going to see coyotes out. If you need to walk your dog at dusk and dawn because of work, we're going to talk about some hazing techniques when you go out for a walk. Do not let your dog attempt to meet a coyote. A lot of people do this. They think it's a good idea. It's not a good idea. This is a wild animal, you do not want the coyote to be comfortable around you and your dog, and you do not want your dog to be comfortable around coyotes. Just because you're there, your dog is going to begin to think coyotes are not a threat. So, we want to keep that distrust and that distance between the coyote and us and our pets. So, spay and neuter, we say that a lot. Supervise very small children while out in the yard. That's just good, practical sense. Make sure you're taking a look and taking, monitoring what's able to get into your yard, and we'll talk a little bit about how to keep wildlife out. Haze if you see a coyote. If a coyote sees you and acknowledges that you see it, and you do nothing, that coyote learns that we're safe, and we don't want them to think that we're safe, and that we're their friends, or we're not a threat to them. I'm not saying we threaten them, but we make sure that they understand that we are something that should be feared, and they should stay away from us. Unprovoked attacks are very rare. So, let's talk about abnormal behavior, when to avoid. If a coyote is stalking you, that's when you're calling the police, that's when you're calling Fish and Wildlife, that is unusual behavior. If a coyote is seeking your attention, that's a coyote that's become too acclimated, and that's a time to report. If a coyote is going after a pet on a six-foot or shorter leash, and the reason we keep saying six-foot leash, isn't because of the, just because of the ordinance, it's because anything bigger than that, the animal is not seen as connected to you. At a six-foot leash, you're more of a unit. On a longer-than-six-foot leash, you're less of a unit, you're seen as a separate thing from your dog. Entering a yard where people are having, are there, adults, that is unusual behavior, or large pets, if you have a couple of big dogs and the coyote's coming in, that is unusual behavior, or sleeping in a busy area. Animals are very vulnerable when they're sleeping, so if you see them sleeping in a busy area, that should kind of raise a, "Hey, this is a little unusual." Sleeping in a busy area in a den is very different from sleeping on a park bench. They are typically more scared of us. We are, some people are intentionally feeding coyotes. The thing about coyote management is, if you are managing and you're doing everything you should be, and your neighbor is feeding the coyote, all of your efforts are for naught. So, you need to get together with your neighbors, again, mostly like Neighborhood Watch. Educate your neighbors, talk to them about what they're doing and what they're not doing that is encouraging coyotes to come and be in the neighborhood. So, we don't have a big number of people here tonight, but we're recording this, so have people take a look and see what they can do, talk to your neighbors. If you see them doing something that you think is attracting coyotes, or not discouraging coyotes, get them on board with you. It's really important that it's a neighborhood project, not a one-house project. Coyotes do look like dogs, and people think, because they look like dogs, they can treat them as pets. Do not do that. These are wild animals, please keep them wild. So, we need to, we need to alter our behavior, our behaviors as to what we're doing, to discourage them. So, doing something one time is not going to work. Just like, for those of you who have a pet dog, and you were training it to sit, and it sat for you once, you didn't think, "Wow, my dog is trained on how to sit." It was after repetition and repetition and repetition. So, think, in this sense, remember, same kind of brain, it's repetition. We need to work over and over with these coyotes to make sure that they understand what our relationship should be, which is very distant. So, it takes time, it takes patience, and it's not going to change overnight. So, we have humane exclusion. We do not want to injure the coyotes, to discourage them from being there, being around us, but there are ways that we can humanely do that. For anybody who goes hiking or backpacking, you've been taught, when, if a bear comes towards you, you just make yourself really big, and you yell and you scream, and maybe you throw some rocks, and you make a complete idiot of yourself, and make yourself as large as possible. You can do that same thing with coyotes. The key is, you keep that up until they turn around and leave. They're going to do that thing where they turn around and they leave, and then they look back. Well, that's not the time that you walk away. You walk away when they turn tail and they leave. So, they're recognizing that, okay, this, whatever, maybe they think we're weird, this weirdo, I got to get away from them. So, that's what we want to do with them. So, you need to be consistent with them. We have an air horn here, and then I have some other tools, really high-tech tools that you can put together. So, before we go to passive hazing, let me grab my tools. So, I think I spent fifty cents on the Diet Coke plus six pennies. So, for fifty-six cents and some tape, you can create a shaker can. So, something very easy to have in your backyard, to walk with, something like that. You see a coyote, you yell at it, "Go away coyote." Also good, if there's a dog that's stalking you, or somewhat aggressive when you're walking your dog. So, this is an easy one. You've been handed whistles, here? Okay, I'm going to back away from the mic, because this will be annoying. Don't do... You need to have some lungs behind it, so... That's irritating. Do that repeatedly, do that yell, scream, do all of that with them. Things that you look less obvious walking around with, so maybe you don't want to walk around with an empty Coke can. Umbrellas are great because they're strange, and they're unusual. This one is one that'll just pop up, so if I see a coyote, and I want to scare it away, and I have my dog, so I don't want to be, you know, scaring my dog by moving my arms around, I just pop open an umbrella, and then, kind of flash it at them. So, that way, the coyote's like, "What is that? That's really weird. I don't like weird. I'm going to walk away from that." And again, they are rarely going to run away. They are going to saunter away and look back at you, and then saunter away some more, when you keep that up. The last thing that I brought was from my son's old golf bag. So, you can carry a stick, you can carry a golf club, you can carry a baseball bat. I've put some ribbons on it to make it look even stranger. A lot of people like to use Mylar. So, you can just, you know, make yourself big by shaking it around. The other advantage of this is, it's loud when I hit it on the ground. So, I'm not hitting the coyote. So, I've made a loud noise, I've got weird things going on. Animals like things that are predictable, so be somewhat unpredictable in how you're approaching the coyote. These are things that are light, they're in your house already, so you can create a sense of being safe when you're walking your dog out, or if you're just going for a walk on your own, to be able to create that hazing ability. If you're on your property, and a coyote comes onto your property, turn your hose onto it, turn your sprinklers onto it. Those are options that you have when you're at your home. Some people have air horns. I've been asked about pepper spray, but in my experience, some people accidentally turn it onto themselves, or walk into it, so unless you're trained, that's probably not a good idea, but an air horn, that's just a nice, big, loud noise, that's going to startle and start them sauntering away from you. So, we talked, Officer DeLeon talked about the coyote roller. So, you can hire someone to bring in and do the coyote roller for you. The other option is, it's PVC pipe, a few brackets, and some guy wire. That's all you're looking at. Coyotes can jump a six-foot fence, but they're not clearing the fence necessarily, they're doing what we say is posting, is they're putting their front paws on the fence to continue to go over. So, what, their front paws, if they hit a roller, they roll and they fall back, and then they do it again, and then they fall back again. So, it's not like the roller's going to magically stop them from doing this, they're going to try it a few times and say, "You know what? This is a lot of work for whatever they have in that yard, I'm going to move to the, I'm going to move on." And if everybody in the neighborhood is making it a lot of work, then they move on. That means your resources are getting lower, and as the resources for the coyotes get lower, their litters become smaller, and we have a reduction in population. Nothing is going to be a quick fix. There is no quick fix in this. This is all working together as a community with the same, with the same end goal. Of course, if humans are attacked or in imminent danger, call 911. Let the police deal with that. If you do have concerns about brazen coyotes, or issues with coyotes, call Fish and Wildlife. You can also call your local animal control. We do, we do tracking, Inland Valley Humane Society does tracking, I'm so glad to hear the city of Glendora is part of the tracking with the university system. That's really very important, because we can get an idea of what populations we're looking at, and seeing where the coyotes are active, and, and help us, the more we know about what they're doing, the easier it is for us to deal with them in our community. They are part of our ecosystem here. They are a non-invasive species. They are a species that is supposed to be living here. So, they're not coming from abroad, they are here, they do serve a very good purpose. I don't like rats in my house. I don't like rats and mice in my yard. They're going to serve that purpose of cleaning up that population of pest. So, this is our contact information, and Fish and Wildlife as well. So, thank you very much for inviting me out, and we'll be available afterwards.
Hi, everybody, how are you this evening? It's nice to see you. My name is Dave Dodge, I'm a volunteer with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. My office is located in Los Alamitos, California, and there's about fifty volunteers in Southern California that support the California Game Wardens. Tonight, I want to share something just a little different with you. So far, you've heard a lot about coyote ecology, and some behavior, some things to do, and some hazing techniques, all good information. Tonight, what I want to share with you is a program we call Wildlife Watch. My boss developed this program, starting in 2008. We were getting a number of calls from different city agencies, saying, "Hey, we got a problem with coyotes," or "We have a problem with bears or lions, whatever, we need some help, can you help us?" My boss looked around, and he came up with a program called Wildlife Watch. It's built on the principles of Neighborhood Watch. And for those of you that are familiar with it, this was a program that was started in 1970. This program was developed for the police department, to get the community involved to help them with crime. It was so successful, you guys in New York City, that it expanded across the country immediately, and it's been a great success ever since. The cornerstone pillars of this program with Neighborhood Watch, we've used with Wildlife Watch. It's almost identical, the only difference is, instead of dealing with crime, we're dealing with wildlife. And it could be any kind of wildlife, from mountain lions to squirrels. It's really an exciting program, we've had some great, great early results, and I want to share it with you. I'm going to give you a thirty-thousand-foot look at this program called Wildlife Watch. What is it? You guys, it's an educational program, strictly an educational program that involves a neighborhood that's having problems with wildlife, getting those neighbors organized, the residents organized, in an organized fashion, to work together to get these animals off the street. Okay? Been very, very successful early. The interesting part about this, when we put Wildlife Watch into the communities, and I'm going to give you two or three examples of some of the results we've had, that I can share with you. Some of the things that's been the real byproducts of this program is neighbors that don't even know each other are working together, trying to get these animals off the street, trying to get the attractants out of the neighborhood, trying to make sure that trash is managed, covered, so the critters can't get in it, either the rodents and the animals like that, because what happens is, the rodents will get into trash, the coyotes eat the rodents, or the coyotes will get into the trash, so either way, the coyote's a winner. Managing trash is real important. We talked about habitat, you know, taking away attack places, places for coyotes to rest under, we want to manage that as well. Also, we like to work with residents in the neighborhood, at least for a while, to stop feeding any kind of animals outside. Because what we've learned over the years is, folks, if you take food, water, shelter, or space, or any combination of that away, the animals will move on. Believe you me, they won't stay in the neighborhood and starve to death. They will move on and try to go somewhere else, where they can get that easy opportunity. We spend, my group, the volunteer group, spends a lot of time working with residents in neighborhoods, on the difference between a sighting, imminent threat, and then ultimately an attack on a human. Also, and most importantly, we spend a lot of time talking about natural versus unnatural behavior. Let me give you an example. Saturday morning, 7:30 in the morning, you go to the front door, you open the door, you're going to go down at the end of the driveway and pick up your newspaper. You walk out the front door, you look down the driveway, you've got a cup of coffee in your hand, and you see a coyote down there. Coyote sees you, you see the coyote, coyote takes off. Is that natural or unnatural behavior? It's natural. That coyote's still afraid of us. See, because when coyotes are born, they're deathly afraid of us. It's only over time that they become accustomed to us, and they adapt extremely well. When they're born, they're afraid of us, and when mom starts taking them out of that den, and the family starts training them, teaching them how to survive in the city, they get used to the music, the sound, the horns, the lights, the noise, and then pretty soon, they start seeing humans, and they start zeroing in on us, and looking at us. But what do we do most times when we see a coyote? We ignore it or avoid it. All right? So, all of a sudden, coyote, being the smart animal that it is, figures out, "Hey, human's no threat, they're no threat to me." And then, if that coyote is fed anywhere along the line, now we could have a potential problem, you guys, because that coyote is now what we call habituated, meaning it's no longer afraid of humans, and it's been fed somewhere down the line. That animal could become, I say could become, dangerous, okay? Dangerous to the point that it bites someone. All right? So, we spend a lot of time, same example, you come out, 7:30 in the morning, you're going to go down at the end of the driveway, get your paper, you walk out the door, there's a coyote sitting down there at the end of the driveway, coyote doesn't move, you see the coyote, coyote doesn't move. So, you go back in the house, and you get your wife's favorite pot and pan set, you go outside, and you beat on those pots and pans. Coyote doesn't move. So, you being the good golfer that you are, you go in the house, you get in your golf bag, and you get some water balls out, and you come back to the front door, and you start chucking water balls, golf balls, at the coyote, not at the coyote, near the coyote. You don't want to hit the coyote. Coyote doesn't move. Is that natural or unnatural behavior? That's unnatural behavior, you guys. That animal is absolutely no longer afraid of human beings. One last example I want to give you. You're in the backyard, you've got your pet in the backyard, you're having a barbecue or whatever, coyote comes over the wall after your small pet. You're in the backyard, is that natural or unnatural behavior? Everybody say that's unnatural behavior. Okay? All right, good. So, we spent time on those areas, really pounding on that, and making sure the residents in this hotspot area understand that, and understand the sighting's an imminent threat. There we go. What's my role? You guys, I'm a conservation coach, I've been in the program three years. Probably the last two and a half years, I've spent most of my time reading, studying, and chasing these animals, hazing these animals, running them off the streets. My job is to bring tools to cities and unincorporated areas to help them deal with these animals in their hotspots, and get them out of, off the streets and out of that area. Okay, that's what I do. I go into the community and work with the residents in a given community, to help them, organize them, give them particular, specific jobs to do, things that have to be done, to get these animals off the street. So, I work with agencies, I work with police departments, you guys, I work with animal services, I'm in the mayor's office, city council's office, county supervisor's office, I mean, in addition to being in the community. My specialty is community work, residents on streets, but I'll do it all. A big thing that we do is, we do site surveys. We'll go out, and we'll spend a lot of time in an area looking for attractants, we'll even inventory backyards. If the resident, the homeowner, wants us to come in and give them some recommendations on what we see, bird feeders, dirty barbecues, water source, food, compost piles, fruit, vegetables, whatever, whatever the issue is, whatever the attractants are, that's what we really focus on, is trying to remove as many attractants as possible, managing trash. I got a huge problem, I'm working a Wildlife Watch program in Seabridge in Huntington Beach, they have a monstrous trash problem. We either got to get more dumpsters into this four-hundred-unit complex of townhomes, or we've got to get waste management to collect them more often, because these dumpster lids don't close, and the coyotes are just jumping from one dumpster to the other. And then they wonder why they have so many coyotes in this four-hundred-unit complex. Real simple, first issue, you guys, is manage the trash in that particular situation. If we do that, we'll reduce the number of coyotes significantly. Will we get rid of all of them? Probably not. Will we get rid of the majority of them? Absolutely. So, trash management in that particular scenario is huge. All right? We conduct the site surveys, we'll do backyard inventories, we assist in setting up Wildlife Watch programs, and like I say, that's my job, that's where I spend most of my time, is on the streets, when I'm not doing community meetings. Last but not least, we spend a lot of time with the residents in a given area, talking about reporting. You know what we're finding? You know what we're finding? We're finding that the problem with the coyotes is probably three to four to five to 10 times bigger than what's being reported. People just aren't reporting what they're saying. And oh, by the way, guess what? The city can't fix what they don't know about. That's why reporting to the city's dispatch line, so they can get this thing pinpointed and find out where the hotspots are in the community, where they're having the most activity, what time of day the sightings are happening, so they can get some people out there to work on it. Does that make sense, including us? Reporting is everything, you guys. And if nothing else, if you don't take anything else away from this meeting, please report every time you see a coyote. Report it to the city. Now, are they going to come out on every report? Absolutely not. Absolutely not. If it's a sighting, they're not going to come out and do anything about it. By the time they got there, the coyote'd be long gone. Okay? But they need to know where they are. You understand what I'm saying? That's really important. Reporting, you guys, is key to our success in getting these animals off the street. Why is it needed? It's needed, you guys, because we know conflict is caused because of attractants. And the biggest problem, you guys, I have as a volunteer for Fish and Wildlife, is people feeding animals, either directly or indirectly, feeding coyotes and wildlife. It's the biggest problem I have. It really is. If we could get people to quit feeding the wildlife, and it starts in the park, at the lake, with grandma showing the grandkids and feeding the ducks and geese. It starts with that. And then it moves on into feeding wildlife, meaning coyotes. I mean, I've walked some of the trails back here in the backcountry. I've seen hikers throwing sandwiches to them. And then they wonder why a coyote's chasing them. You see what I'm saying? It's just a vicious circle. You guys, there aren't enough, I can promise you, game wardens, animal services people, or policemen, to be on every corner managing every wildlife issue in this city, in this county, in Southern California. If the residents, if the, if the population in Southern California doesn't rise up and do something about this, there'll be no change. Nothing's going to happen. I mean, we, we're trying to get the word out to as many people as we can about what we know about these animals and that they've got to work together. This is not rocket science. This is just doing some basic common things, but if we all do it and do it well, we'll make a huge impact. And that's the bottom line there. We can solve wildlife conflicts, you guys, if we work together. Now, who do we work with? Who does Fish and Wildlife work with? You guys, we have worked with homeowner associations, we've worked with mobile home parks, we've worked in apartment complexes, we've worked in neighbor, all kinds of neighborhoods. And where we've had some really good success is working with city government and volunteer groups that are attached to the city government, particularly Neighborhood Watch teams. Why? Because the infrastructure is in place. Those Neighborhood Watch teams that deal with crime in your local neighborhood, they've got a block captain. Most of the residents in that area know the block captain and the volunteers on that program. We've had some great success because the team is in place. Then it's just a matter of taking on wildlife issues and, and helping us with that that works so extremely well. But we've had some great success in that area. How do we get started? There's a number of ways we get started with a possible Wildlife Watch program, but I'll, I'll give you a couple of them real quick. We might be out in a neighborhood on a call, canvassing a neighborhood, maybe there's been a wild, a coyote issue in the neighborhood, something like that. And we'll canvas that neighborhood and we'll look for interest in a Wildlife Watch program, meaning someone willing to stand up and say, hey, I'll be a block captain, I'll take responsibility for my two, three streets, I'll get them organized, and see if we can't make an impact on feeding, trash management, et cetera, et cetera. Or, to be honest with you, my boss gets a call from a police department, like Chuck. Chuck called my boss and had a conversation with him about the coyote situation out here. And we'll get involved that way. My boss talked to Chuck, Chuck, my boss asked me to talk to Chuck and away we went, and that's why we're here tonight. So we can get involved in that way. We'll come in and, one of the keys, you guys, is the city has to be behind this kind of a program, meaning getting the residents in a local neighborhood, working together. They've got to support it. They don't have to do the work, but they got to support it. They got to be behind it. Okay? Or it won't work. The police department's got to help us. Animal Services has got to help us. Parks and Rec has got to help us. Because they do golf course maintenance, they also manage the parks that have trashcans and dumpsters, everybody, waste management's got to be involved in the same. All city agencies have a, a role to play in a Wildlife Watch program. Okay? We'll create a leadership team, you guys. Then we'll get out and hold a community meeting. We'll get the community together and we'll look for volunteers to be block captains and, and get this thing organized and going. Once we do that, after we've held a community meeting, then we'll start meeting with the residents in the community, and we'll appoint some committee chairman, if you will, with very specific jobs. Tracking results, making sure that the residents in that area are reporting what they see to the city. All right? So tracking results, getting that done. Also, we'll have a group of residents in that area that just walk the streets, knocking on doors, providing some basic information, pamphlets and brochures, offering backyard inventories if we'll be, but looking for attractants, you guys. Looking to remove as many attractants as possible. And then, what we do is we establish a monthly meeting schedule. It could be monthly, it could be semi-monthly, it could be weekly, depending upon the severity of the coyote problem in the area. But we get a regularly scheduled meeting together to talk about what's working and what's not in the community. Okay. What's the keys to the success in this program? Leadership, 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 and leadership. Meaning somebody standing up and saying, I'll organize my neighborhood, I'll get this thing together, and I'll get some volunteers to help me do some specific jobs that need to be done to make sure that we get this thing under control. A solid communications plan is critical. That's why Neighborhood Watch is so good, because they've got an infrastructure in place built to communicate, both internally within the team and externally within all the residents in that given area that's a hotspot and they're having a problem with. We use all kinds of media, flyers, you guys, we use social media. I'll talk about Irvine just real quickly. In Irvine, I put a Wildlife Watch program. 2015, we had a disastrous summer in the city of Irvine. We had six bites on humans in less than 90 days. Three of those six bites were on kids under three years old. I spent almost my entire summer in the city of Irvine, and I live in Seal Beach, just working the streets, talking to as many people as I could about all the things that we've addressed here so far. You guys, one of the things we did, where we put our Wildlife Watch program in, we had a bite in a given neighborhood in Portello Springs and numerous sightings, coyote sightings. We put this program in place, got the residents in that neighborhood organized, specific jobs to do. We walked the streets, knocked on every door in that community. What we did was, these people were all connected to Nextdoor. We carved out a special section in Nextdoor with just these homeowners from this particular area, so that if any one of those homeowners saw a coyote at any time, day or night, all they do is go to their smartphone, coyote sighting, what time, where it was, send off an alert. Every neighbor, everyone, every resident knew about the situation. Okay? That's instant communication. Worked extremely well. Oh, by the way, it worked really well for animal services in Irvine, because they were getting the messages and the alerts at the same time. So, those are the kinds of things you can do. Monthly reporting and tracking. Let me give you a quick success story. In the city of Irvine, we put this Wildlife Watch program in place in Portello Springs. Like I say, they had a bite on a human and numerous, numerous sightings. Put this program in place, first 12 months after the program was put in place, they didn't have one reported coyote sighting in the area. Now, there were sightings all around them, the entire surrounding area, there were coyote activity and coyote sightings, but where we had the Wildlife Watch program in place and managed trash and took away the attractants, removed feeding, any kind of feeding for six months or so, for 12 months, first 12 months, not one coyote sighting. 13th month, we had our first sighting. It was a coyote that ran from this end of Portello Springs to that end, never stopped, never looked back, was just strictly passing through. In the last 24 months, you guys, they've had a total of four sightings, no pet loss, no pet loss, no attacks on humans, no imminent threat. Amazing story. How about Culver City? Just quickly. Culver City, Culver Crest, 550 homes over in the city of Culver City. Magnificent area. On this side of Culver Crest, you've got West Los Angeles College. Right behind Culver Crest, you've got a great big giant oil field. And over here, on this side of Culver Crest, you've got a large cemetery and mortuary. They had coyotes staying in the oil field and coming into the city streets, into the crest, at night and taking pets. They had 20 Neighborhood Watch teams that covered this 550 homes. We got 11 of those Neighborhood Watch teams out of the 20 to take on wildlife, as well as their criminal activities. Guys, we reduced the number of sightings in the area 80% in the first year. That's just taking care of business. That's just, I've never seen anything like this, you guys. I've never had any experience. I've never been a community organizer. I've never done anything like this in my, my prior past history. But to see what the community can do when it gets organized and sets its sights on a goal and a mission to get rid of these animals, it's amazing the things they can do and how they do them. So, Culver City dropped it 80%. The absolute gold standard of Wildlife Watch programs is in the city of Torrance. Torrance took this concept, this idea of what we're trying to get across to the public and get them involved in, took it to the next level. I have never seen anything like that. I mean, these guys gold-plated this thing and took it to the next level, and if you want success. Culver City was, I'm sorry, Torrance was averaging 150 coyote calls a month. That was their average. You know what they're averaging today? Less than 20. And how many pet takes they're getting now? I mean, they were losing pets right and left. Maybe a couple a month, maybe? Boy, we went in there, spent a lot of time with them, not only on Wildlife Watch, but we trained all their police officers on hazing techniques. They've got bicycle cops that ride bikes in the streets in the neighborhoods in Torrance. And we trained them all on how to haze. And every time they see a coyote, they run it off the street. They run it out of there before it can get into a backyard and take a pet. You guys, it's been amazing, the transition. They've got a school program that knock your socks off. They're tired, they're talking to adults. They're going in the skids, they're going in the schools talking to kids, and the kids are going home and talking to mom and dad. It's amazing, you guys, what's happened in Torrance. Newport Beach, same way. It's been a wonderful, wonderful transition. So, monthly reporting, you guys, and hazing techniques. You know, it's, to close, and I'm getting ready to close here, I want to tell you my feeling on hazing. First of all, there's no science that says hazing works. There's no science. But I'll tell you something. I've been hazing coyotes for years, and I know it works, because I've run them out of neighborhoods. I've chased them down the street and run them out. Does it always work? No. When a coyote gets to the point where it's no longer afraid of humans, chances are that coyote can't be hazed. Now, that doesn't mean that coyote is a public safety issue. Just because it can't be hazed doesn't mean that it's going to bite somebody immediately. Does that make sense? It just means it's no longer afraid of humans. But you guys, I know it works. Right now, there's a study going on by the University of California Extension. Oh, by the way, they're doing a marvelous study right now, studying diet, because they figure out, they've got 250 coyotes that they've cut open and looked to see what they're eating. And you know something, you guys? I, I never believed this, but it's absolutely true. They have found in the stomachs of coyotes, shoes, clothes. These animals will eat anything. They will absolutely eat anything, depending upon how hungry they are. This is an amazing study, early results. We'll share with you when we get more information on it. But the bottom line is, we're trying to understand what they eat, because we figure if we can understand what they eat, we'll do a better job of managing. Okay? So, lots is going on, lots is happening, and that's it.[1556.78][1556.78](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Dave. And all the other presenters, good job. A lot of information got brought out. I'll try and address some of the questions that have come up. In some of these, it looks like, well, it looks like you're starting to see dogs and cats posters. Any thoughts on how? With regards to dogs and cats that are disappearing, there's, there's different schools of thought. Unless somebody sees a coyote actually attack it, it could have gotten hit by a car, it could have got attacked by a mountain lion, or any other kind of, you know, animal of prey. Any animal that's out by itself, not in its yard, wandering around, as far as a coyote sees, and correct me if I'm wrong, and they're running out in a park off a leash, that's basically prey. They sees that, see that as a food source. So, you need to have that leash, it needs to be six feet or less, to keep it close to the person that's controlling that animal, so the coyote equates that animal is with this person, it's not prey. Question about ammonia being used. Ammonia can be a deterrent, doesn't always work, but it's kind of like the flu shot. You go get a flu shot, is it going to stop the flu? Not necessarily. But it may stop some animals from coming to your property. Case in point, about five years ago, I had an individual here in the city that contacted me, and he was having a lot of coyote problems. So we kind of kicked around some of the ideas, we talked about some of the exact things that the presenters did tonight. And one of the ones I threw out to him is to go online and buy synthetic urine from a mountain lion. And he thought, really? I go, I heard it works, give it a try. He did it for three years, never saw a coyote. Gone. He got lazy. The fourth year, stopped doing it. Coyotes came back. He went back online, bought it again, started utilizing it. And the only way I found that out, I saw him four years later, and he was at the department doing something else, and I happened to be in the lobby, and he goes, Chuck, you're absolutely right. It worked and got rid of my coyotes. I got lazy. So, as long as people are diligent in keeping the attractants down, keeping the food source away, it's going to help. Now, you can do everything you can to protect your own property, just because your neighbor doesn't do it, doesn't mean the coyotes are going to entirely disappear. But that's why something like the Wildlife Program, you get everybody in the community involved, it forces them away, and they may go to another community. But it's important that everybody gets involved and, and does their fair share. Coyotes can climb a 12-foot fence, no doubt. They probably can. They can probably jump that high. We had a picture just the other day, someone showed me, of a coyote sitting on the metal post of a chain-link fence with its rear legs in the, in the chain link, and the other two legs on the top of the ball of this metal post. Just as agile as a cat. So, they're very adaptable, they're capable of doing a lot of things that we don't expect them to do. Walking on a wall, very common, not a problem. They can walk on a wall easily. At this point, I'd like to thank everybody for showing up tonight. Thank you for the questions and being here, and have a good evening. Thank you.[1787.48][1787.48](APPLAUSE).[1788.48]